Good evening, everyone. And thank you for attending the organization meeting tonight. Uh, we want to congratulate the following duly elected members of the board. Mr. John Buckley, Mr. Chris Damari, Mr. Jeff Mann. Congratulations. Next order of business is the oath of office. Mr. Green. Uh, the district board attorney will provide the oaths.
Thank you, Mr. Petrizzo. By way of explanation, uh, before a member can be sworn into the Board of Education, uh, we have to receive the results of their criminal background check. Um, unfortunately, as sometimes does happen, we have not received the results back from the state for Mr. Buckley. Uh, so we are unable to swear him in as a board member tonight, and he will be sworn in as soon as we have those results back. So if the other two new board members would meet me in the front, we'll do the oath.
I'm going to go slowly because there's some statutes that are in here that have numbers in them. Um, you can either swear or affirm if you don't want to swear. Uh, and no one is just lying to state so nothing does anyway that you pronounce it. And when I say change your name, I do say change your name. Will you read it? I, I. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear truthfully and reason that I will bear truthfully and reason to the things and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the defense. So help me God. I, I. You solemnly swear that I suggest the qualification to strides by law to the office of members of a Board of Education. And that I am not disqualified as a voter. I give all pursuant due NJF NJF nineteen colon four death counts nor dishqualify seek the conviction of a crime for offense listed in NJF HCH colon twelve death counts and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office. According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Hey, congratulations again. Um, we'll, we'll go into our roll call. Mrs. Briamonte.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Here.
Mrs. Zhang.
Here.
Dr. Kalur.
Here.
Mrs. Tassillo.
Here.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mr. Damari.
Here.
Mr. Mann.
Here.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum. Black salute. Statement is hereby made that adequate notice of this meeting was given by posted written notice prominently on the bulletin board and the Office of the Board of Education, sixty-five McCampbell Road, Homedale, New Jersey, the district's website, and sent to the four district schools. The mailing and or hand delivery of said notice to the designated newspapers, Asbury Park Press, Independent, the PLG, PSG, PSA, PTSO, SAB Presidents and Student Representatives to the Board, filing with the clerk of Homedale Township Police Headquarters and Public Library. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. There are two opportunities for the public to speak. The first is at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second is at the end of the meeting for other items. Any individual desiring to speak shall give his or her name, address, and the group, if any, that is represented. The presentation shall be as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes per individual. There are certain matters that may be brought before the Board that cannot be immediately addressed in public. Such matters may be referred to the president to the board committee. Such matters may be referred by the president to a board committee and or the superintendent for consideration and or resolution. The Board vests in its president or other presiding officer authority to terminate the remarks of any individual of he or she deems it in the best interest of those present to do so. Are there any questions or comments from the public on action items only? Okay, seeing none. We're at the point where we are asking for nomination and election of the President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Peter Ready for President.
Is there a second? Second. Any other nominations? Seeing none. Um, can I have a motion or second to take a roll call on the vote for President?
Move.
Second.
Mrs. Briamonte.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I will support Pete although for the second year, he never called me and asked me or let me know that he wanted to be president, but yes, I will support him.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Mrs. Zhang.
Yes.
Dr. Kalur.
Yes.
Mrs. Tassillo.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Damari.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Pete. As President Pro Tem, I turn over the remainder of this meeting to the duly elected President. Congratulations, Pete.
Thank you, sir. Well, thanks, uh, everyone here for voting for me. Uh, been on the board about ten years. Uh, you know, back, I guess, six years ago, Joe and I were President and Vice President. So I can tell you a few things that my leadership style is definitely, this is a board, this is nine of us. This isn't my board. This isn't Terrence's board, Kim's board, or anyone else's board. This is a board's board. This is the nine of us, nine equal members. It's a round table. So my commitment to everyone here and to the public is, you know, we're here for the students. And obviously, we do the best job we can with the taxpayers and the budgets that we have. Uh, and like I said, I've been on this board ten years. I know we've done a lot of good things. I can say in the ten years that we've been here, this feels like the calmest it's been in the last ten years. You know, we've had everything from ethics charges to COVID to referendums to all sorts of things going on. And it's the first time in all these years that I feel like we actually have a, you know, we have a nice, the superintendent's been here every year. We have an entire staff that's been stable. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to a very good year. Uh, thank you for putting the trust in me. Uh, my door is always open. I do email, you know, answer emails, phone calls, whatever it is. And, uh, like I said, it's nine of us up here. We were elected by this town to serve this town. And every voice is, every voice matters, you know, this, whatever people have, you know, if it's serving the students, that's what I think we're here for, and that's definitely what will be my commitment, uh, for the following year. So thank you very much. So, thank you to Mr. Petrizzo. Uh, I actually asked him if this, this was his sixteenth year, uh, being the President Pro Tem. So, thank you, Mike, for all these years. I thought it was fourteen years. So, you know, obviously COVID sort of mixed things up. So thank, every year you do a great job, and a pleasure working with you. Uh, continuing with the meeting, uh, nomination, election of Vice President. So resolved, uh, do we have any nominations for Vice President?
I nominate Linda Zhang as Vice President.
Second.
Do we have any other?
I nominate Terrence Wall for Vice President.
Any second?
My second.
Any other nominations for Vice President? I see none. Uh, make a, I guess, a motion.
Move.
Thank you. And the roll call.
You're moved, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, right. Okay. So I guess the first vote would be for
Well, what we will do is, uh, just each board member, when called upon, should indicate the individual who that board member is voting for.
Mr. Ready.
Uh, Terrence Wall.
Mrs. Briamonte.
Linda.
Mrs. Zhang.
Linda.
Dr. Kalur.
Linda.
Mrs. Tassillo.
Terrence.
Mr. Wall.
Terrence.
Mr. Damari.
Terrence.
Mr. Mann.
Uh, Terrence.
Motion, uh, passes. Mr. Wall has been appointed Vice President of the Board. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim.
And very briefly, thank you very much. Appreciate your support. Look forward to getting great things done. Uh, continuing to get great things done with my fellow board members now and into the future on behalf of the public, the parents, and especially the children that are here tonight, and all the children and students that are attending Homedale Public Schools. Thank you very much, and happy new year to everybody. Thank you. And be remiss for it, and also thank my beautiful wife who's here tonight as well. Thank you, honey. Thank you for always being here and supporting me.
Yeah, thank you.
And yeah, thanks to my wife, uh. I would say for the past decade, she always, she, I'm, I'm leaving many times during the month, and she thinks I'm, you know, she's wondering where I always go. So, you know, I think it's, it's been, and she knows. So she knows I've been actually coming to board meetings and coming to board committee meetings and everything else. So thank you for allowing me to leave the house and all those fun things and
I pledged to help the new president. I just all right. Thank you.
So on reorganization night, usually it's a short meeting. I think the only action item we have tonight, uh, is the Open and Public Meetings Act establishing the meeting date, time, and place. So I don't know if we want to have a discussion on the calendar, or do we? Any? Right, okay. So a motion to
Move.
Thank you. And discussion.
Oh, you had a second? Okay.
Okay.
Second. Yeah, sorry.
So discussion. And this is right, right now, the calendar reflects all the dates that we have for the next public meetings, which would be, this is still the, having a meeting, a subcommittee, uh, the way we've been doing it. And I know we've had discussions on committee of the whole, and knowing that we, uh, we have Eileen, uh, remotely, and we have John in the audience, it was my belief that we should stay with the committee, subcommittee structure we have right now. Give it a few months, you know, we've been talking, talking with superintendent, wait till we get through budgets and things like that. And if, as the board, especially with Jeff, John, and, uh, and Chris, we have, you know, have a few months under your belt after the budgets are done. We can reconvene, you have some experience where you're at, and we could see how the board wants to go. If we want to stay with the subcommittee structure or the committee of the whole, and, uh, you know, continue the conversation then. So I guess, Mike, we have a, a vote?
Well, I like, we're going to discuss a little bit.
Please.
All right, just, uh, briefly, for, for folks who aren't familiar, there are two different structures that the districts in the, in the state operate by. One is the subcommittee. Uh, I don't know what the colloquial term is, but, and the second is committee of the whole. In the subcommittee, you have the one meeting a month, and then there are various subcommittees, buildings and grounds, budget and finance, um, labor, uh, curriculum that meets, uh, with a smaller group, a non-quorum subcommittee that's appointed by, uh, the board through the president. And, uh, they meet prior to the regular board meeting, and a great deal of discussion and work is done there. And then you have the one meeting towards the end of the month where the decisions are made and the, and, uh, the votes are cast and that kind of thing. The second type is a committee of the whole where you meet twice a month. The difference is the subcommittees are instead compressed into a public meeting. So the public would instead have one, would have two opportunities to be in front of the their board. And I, I would note that even under the subcommittee format, the chair can have their meeting open to the public under the current format, though not typically done here. So I've been a proponent for a number of years for committee of the whole, and I'll explain why. First of all, it empowers the public, I think, to a greater level. It's far more transparent in my mind because they can see the board at work. Um, it also empowers all nine members of the board. Why? When you have a board, uh, uh, that may be bifurcated, uh, balkanized from time to time, that maybe doesn't communicate as well. What happens is for any member, whether in that a perceived or perceived majority or minority, they're all getting the same information at the same time, in the same place, in the same manner. So everyone is getting the same information. Uh, so you don't have things lost in translation between a meeting that's typically one week before the official meeting. And also what I find are the complications of the, the compilation of the minutes, the time that the minutes are compiled and distributed to the board where they're supposed to be acting on all of this, uh, all of these items. Um, uh, in concert during the actual, you know, the, the official public meeting. It also gives parents, uh, twice a month, two opportunities to see their board if they wish to communicate with their board. The other challenge I found with the committee of the whole, over the, I'm sorry, the subcommittee format for the past five years is that the, um, oftentimes the decisions aren't well articulated between the various subcommittees. And additionally, many of the agendas are redundant, often copied and pasted and going over the same information with, which if you follow board meetings, you'll notice that some of the reports are very similar, which is an inefficient use of the board member's time, administration's time, and also from the public, it just simply lacks transparency. So that said, as I spoke into a few of the members, some of them know, I feel very strongly about it. Whichever way the majority wants to go, whether it's sticking with the same program, which I find to be inefficient, um, and that's from experience, or a hybrid spoken to, uh, different members about, uh, setting a time where set the format to be subcommittee for a couple of months, and then committee of the whole. Could bear in mind, in twenty twenty-one, I think we had five committee of the whole meetings. So I would also argue that it's a very subtle change. It's subtle, but significant for the public, for the parents, for the students, because they see their board at work. They see how the curriculum is developed. They see how buildings and grounds are discussed. They see the budget process as opposed to seeing a resolution where the budget is sent to the county as a not-to-exceed budget, having very little public input. So if you said to me, what's the, what's the, the main thrust of it? It's front-facing, public-facing transparency, which, which all of us have run on. And I think it's very, it's a subtle difference, but it's significant, and I think it gives both the public, the parents, the board, and administration greater control of the time by having a certainty of time and place and method within which we distribute information to, from, and within each other. So that's the reason why I think it makes perfect sense. Um, that said, it's I'm going to defer to the majority or where you wish to go. Um, but I'm sharing this based on experience, professional experience in running meetings for fifteen, fifteen or plus years. But then I would then defer, and I'd like to ask the superintendent directly, which form do you prefer? And why? And I think that would help inform the view of the board members who aren't quite sure which direction they'd like to go on. Because my understanding is that you've found inefficiencies, and I'd like you to share those and share your opinion because we count on your opinion as the chief administrator of schools. Thank you.
I think the, is the points that Mr. Wall has, has made are, are valid and, and fair points. Um, you know, my, uh, I, I think that either format, um, can be effective. Um, you might, mine is really more, um, looking at it from through, through sort of a practical lens, um, which is, um, in the midst of, of change, right, of, of the onboarding of new board members, uh, which procedurally is never ideal in the time it happens. I've always thought that, that bringing new board members on in the middle of the year, right smack dab in the middle of the budget process is not an ideal time to be onboarding new board members. Nonetheless, it is when it happens. Um, you know, and, and so sort of change on top of change. And, and, and while one could suggest that it is subtle, um, this is the manner, the current subcommittee structure is the manner in which, uh, this administration and the board has operated for, you know, since I've been here, uh, with some exceptions in the past. And so, um, whatever, whatever transition is made, I just want to make sure that it is, um, that it's an effective transition, um, that all those who are participating in the new model are prepared um, and understand what their role is in that, um, and, and how to do that, because that first committee of the whole meeting, it's going to be in public, right? So your, your first meeting as new board members is going to be a committee of the whole in public for that first meeting. And so I, I think that there's real promise for committee of the whole. I do think that there could be great efficiency to committee of the whole. Um, I definitely think it is something that the board should, um, absolutely continue to consider. Um, and for transition perhaps in the near future, I just question the, uh, the prudence of making that procedure changed amidst other changes that are happening right now. That, that's my fair opinion.
Any other comments?
It is my understanding that this, uh, process has been tried before, committee of the whole, and then you you chose to go to the format that we have now, since you have been around.
Yeah, I think a couple of years ago, during, it was really during COVID. So we had tried it, I think, like Terrence said, I think it went about five or so meetings. And then just because of COVID and the things that were going on, we switched back to the subcommittee structure. I mean, I do agree with Terrence, if there was a year to try it, this is one of those years because we don't have a teacher contract, we don't have an administrator contract, we have a superintendent. There's a lot of things that we don't, that aren't in the way that would make it, you know, we would have to be in, you know, a private, you know, discussing personnel matters, things like that. So there was ever a year to do it, this of all the years that I've been on the board, this is one of those years, like, okay, everything's aligning in a very good way. And I agree with, with the superintendent saying, hey, let the new board members come in for a few months, get their feet wet, drink from the fire hose, see what's going on, understand all the acronyms and everything else and all the different, and understand even the different administrators that you're dealing with in the different, um, you know, different committees to get to know them a little bit. And then almost reassess. And if I look at the calendar that we have here, March twenty-ninth is basically, I think, the, that's the budget hearing meeting, right, Mike? Or, well, that's usually the March, March fifteenth, March twenty-ninth is usually when we send in the budget. So around that time would be in my brain thinking, okay, that, that could be a good, you know, stop point to say, okay, hey, reassess, revisit, what's the new board members think in addition to the rest of the board? Because like Terrence said, and the superintendent said, this is a board decision. So if the majority would want to go that way, and I honestly can argue both sides, I think, I think both sides work. So I don't really have a huge opinion either way, and that's why I was like, you know, everyone's, like I said earlier, everyone's opinion matters, and you know, any other comments of Eileen in, in the audience or Kim?
So I'm I have never tried committee of the whole. So I'm willing, and I think that what should happen, you know, I don't know if it happens tonight or not, but that we look at the subcommittees for January, February, and March. And I don't know if we do that right now, but we pick April, May, and June um, for committee of the whole. And leave every, so we just add the dates for April, May, and June, although May already has two dates in it. So you're really just adding a date for April and June. And we conduct April, May, and June as committee of the whole. Leave July on as the same. And in June, we then decide we've done this for three months, so that way the new gentleman can do both. And then for April, May, and June, like Sharika and I, who've never experienced committee of the whole, we can then say, okay, we've now experienced both. And then we decide for the new fiscal year, July one and on. And I think that that's a good middle-of-the-road compromise that we, it's adding two dates for right now. That's it. Um, it's just adding, uh, maybe week one in April and, you know, and something in June. That's it. So we'll add two dates. Then we've experienced both, and we can look for July one to just, you know, for the new fiscal year to decide. And everyone can actually make an informed decision rather than the opinions of other people that have tried other things.
That's a great idea.
And again, you know, we, we tried it, and it was during COVID, so that was just a very unique time in and of itself. So it was almost a hard read to give a real assessment. Did it work? Didn't, did it not work? It, it did work, but then we had to pivot, and we pivoted back to the committee structures.
Linda, yeah, um, I have a few words to say regarding this. Um, so last year, we used, you know, the committee is how we accomplished a lot. We have a new leadership coming in, you know, Dr. Kaskon, our um, uh, assistant superintendent and our, you know, supervisor for the curriculars. And, um, we, we accomplished a lot with the, you know, the contract with the teachers and with the administrators. And, um, um, so I, I always think, you know, there's a, if there are anything improved, we should always improve. It's more productive, more efficient, and use everybody's time more efficiently. If I remember correctly, last year, Terrence, I think, only have one committee, only during the one committee, which is my community and relationships. I don't, I don't remember he attended the meeting more than six times. Uh, I really wish this year and Terrence could attend more. This, uh, either subcommittee's meeting or committee as a whole contributed to the board more. Thank you.
Any other comments?
See none?
Just, oh.
Proposal. Uh, basically, it would be a committee of the whole meeting on April nineteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Um, we would have a committee of the whole meeting on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. We would have to have three meetings, I believe, that month because the May third meeting would have to stand. That that would be the meeting at which we presented the final budget. Um, that might, so that would, we would have three meetings in the month of May.
But you would eliminate subcommittees, meetings.
Correct.
Right, so it's a wash.
Correct. Um, and then in June, it would be June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three would be the committee of the whole. The board were considering an amended calendar this evening. Those would be, those would be the prospective dates.
I'd make a motion for the amended calendar pursuant to, uh, fellow board member and Cass, Dr. Kaskon, uh, uh, stating the, the, the relevant dates.
Pete, I thought you said we were going to do this next time because, uh, right, I thought.
Yeah, I think we were talking about more of saying, you know, if we were going to target dates to do. I think, for me, I think we should postpone, you know, pick, you know, solidifying it. Obviously, have it finished a reorg meeting. We, we can pick back up this discussion January twenty-fifth. John will be seated as well. So if he has comments, I mean, I'm sure Eileen will be here as well. But I think having these dates, we can go back and check to make sure there's no calendar conflicts of other things that are going on within the regular school.
I'll withdraw the motion, and we'll move it to that, the, the next date.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good conversation because we still have time. And I think I agree with Kim, it'll give us the, a really good read for this existing board, not an old board, but this board, which we like better. Do we like the committee of the whole? Do we think it's a better use of time? Do we think subcommittee structure? And then we, you know, take it from there.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mrs. Briamonte.
Just to clarify, we're voting on keeping the schedule the way it is currently in the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, yes, so I'm a yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Zhang.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Kalur.
Yes.
Mrs. Tassillo.
Yes.
Mr. Damari.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, I think that was a good conversation. Honestly, I think that's good that we all have feedback, you know, so it's not just one person's agenda or however one wants to do it. So, uh, next item is old, old business. Any old business, any board members? See none? Good. Uh, any new business? I think the only new business I think we would have would be, uh, there's a gentleman in the, uh, audience that last month was his last board meeting after ten or so years on the board. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be with us. Uh, we recognized him then, but we weren't able to personally recognize him. So, uh, I'm not sure if we want to talk, bring Mr. Joe Hammer up to the mic to say thank you, and if he wants to, you know, for his ten years on, on the board. Please state your name and address, please.
Joe Hammer, finally at eight, ten in court. First of all, hey, congratulations, Jeff. John, welcome to the board. I'm so happy that you guys are on and I'm sure you do a great job. Thank you so much for all the comments last month. It was really nice to hear it on the, on the video thing. And I just want to appreciate all the time and effort that you guys put into the board. And all the time and effort that you've helped me out as president of the board and, and through my, my time as a board. It's been a, a wonderful experience. I really love this school district and I am happy with how it is right now. I mean, we went from swatting incidences that Pete and I had to deal with when I first became president to electing a new superintendent and another superintendent and another superintendent. And then doing the referendum. And I think the school district is really good hands with you guys with the new superintendent and this board. I'm really pleased with how the schools look. They look great. They got great programs in place. So I'm really happy with how the district is now. And I, I think you guys will take it to new heights. So my only bit of advice to all of you is even if you don't like or listen to the other person, if you don't like the other person or you don't think their view is correct. Listen to the other person and try to understand that nugget of why they are doing that. Cause they obviously have somebody from the community that has a reason. You may disagree with it and not agree with it, but at least listen to it and try to understand the other side. That was one of the things I tried to do as a board member and as president was just to let everybody have their voice. And Pete, I appreciate the comments that you had about it's all of you is one board. It's not one of you. It's all you as a board. So do your best and I know you guys will. So thank you very much. And I appreciate all your help and your support.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? This brings us to the point.
Oh, yeah. Just one clarification. I just want to be, to read it, go, going back to the committee of the whole. In the past several decades, has committee of the whole ever been tried other than the COVID time, the five meetings? Has it been tried in the past?
I can go back 10 years and I could say not during our 10 years.
Mike and.
Yeah, no, they are. We, during that time, but other than that, you know, I'm not sure, Mr. Patrizzo. Not if you recall in your 16 years here.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah. Not, not that I can recall the, pretty much the, the the regular operating has been under committee structure.
If I may just say, what you want to ponder is, is there anything that you're going to say in subcommittee that you're not comfortable saying in public? And that should help guide your decision.
I think to some extent, the subcommittee to some extent gives us time to look into it in depth a little bit more, you know, so there is some value to it. And it helped me learn a lot of processes, whereas, so there's value to it as well. It's not that we may not want to say it or we hiding anything. It's not transparency. All in all, just gives us a little more time to study it in depth and understand it better. So that's my only tip.
Agreed. Like I know for, like Terrence said before, a lot of times buildings and grounds and budget and finance, a lot of times have very similar agendas. And honestly, one of the reasons why they're not combined together is now you have, each committee has four people. And those two committees together, you have eight people. So there are eight people, basically the entire board gets that same message for buildings and grounds, budget and finance. So there's no, nothing lost in translation. You know, with CNI curriculum instruction and special services, you only have four. So I remember early on, my first couple of years on the board, I was almost like, always playing, almost trying to play catch up with, with CNI. Trying to understand what I'm missing, obviously reading the agenda minutes or, or the, the, the meeting minutes. But there's, there is some things that you just don't get because you're not part of some of those conversations. So that's one thing I know from the committee of the whole. If I had to say, okay, what's one thing I would look forward to? That's one part because okay, now I'm going to be, I'm not going to miss anything there. That, yeah, you could read it, but there's not the conversations that happen. Not every conversation is in the meeting minutes. It just can't. Otherwise you'd have a, you know, a 15 page document, right?
And if we may clarify, just one operational item, a technical issue. For the subcommittees, what is the board's policy on who is drafting the minutes? Is it administrative staff? I think that should just be clear because often it's not clear. Or is it the whoever is chairing that meeting? I would just like to leave here tonight with knowing who is drafting the official minutes. And if we could just agree to have those minutes sent out at least a soft deadline of within 48 hours. Cause part of the challenge with the subcommittee is getting the minutes the day of the meeting. So not only you're not familiar with the information as it went out, you're voting that night on information that relates to minutes. You're only getting that day. So I'm trying to, these are some structural issues that even if we're with the subcommittee, who is drafting the minutes? Is it administrative staff, which frankly I'd recommend? Or is it the chairperson, chairwoman or chairman? And what is the obligation of when those minutes must be distributed to the board? Because the public doesn't anticipate board members coming in voting on items that are often millions of dollars on minutes that they didn't receive until the afternoon. Not always. But anyone who's been here last year, you know, it happens. And that's part of the inefficiency that I'm seeking to cure. Now, and the subcommittee and the committee of the whole, their work, both of those forms are used throughout the states. So there's nothing unusual about it. You know, in that way. But can we just decide who's drafting the minutes? And can we at least have an agreement of at least a soft deadline on the distribution of those minutes, the requirement as to when they're sent to the board? Particularly when they're supposed to be voting on those items in public.
So I just wanted to comment a little bit about the timing on it. Definitely over my many years of being on the board, we did tend to have some notes come in pretty late, but in the last couple of years, the last few presidents had made it abundantly clear that the notes needed to come in, giving everybody sufficient time to read the notes. And I think that's actually worked out pretty well. Definitely in the last year, we saw notes coming in 48 hours or greater before the meeting. So although yes, occasionally over my many years, there have been notes that come in last minute. I'd say in the last few, we've definitely been pretty punctual with our notes. So and, and kudos to everyone who had to do them because it is a bit of a time consuming effort and you do want to, you know, write enough in your notes to properly inform everyone else on the board. So I do think that everyone's been doing a really spectacular job with that. So again, I just want to thank everyone for the time they put into those notes over the last few years.
And I respectfully disagree, but the main question I have is who is drafting them? So at least we have a chain of custody and that accountability. If I would defer to the board, I just, or the president, if we could just have some direction so we know who the responsible party is for the subcommittee minutes, that would be helpful, I think. No, no, I just want to clarify for both the board and the public, if we can.
Right. Cause like, like, like Eileen said, I remember years back, the note, sometimes it could be a little scattered depending on what was going on. But I think the last few years it has gotten better. Or it has been better. I would agree with that. But there are certain times that, yeah, all of a sudden you get notes 24 hours ahead of time, you know? You usually would want them at least 48 hours, something like, so you could at least like dash, digest the information and obviously understand what you're voting on. I think if, if, if the rest of the board wants to comment on how we would want to, whether normally what happened, it really, we haven't had a past practice of a lot of times the administration would do the notes. Like I know a lot of times, Mr. Patrizzo would help with the building grounds, those budget and finance notes. Then the committee chair would essentially edit them or review them and, you know, if have a little get back and forth, and then we'd submit it to the rest of the board. But there was never anything, I don't think we had in official of who owns the notes. So I mean, we could decide that if we want to. That makes it easier, which I, I don't, I don't disagree with. I think that's actually a good thought because this way it's clear of where they're coming from.
So I'm the executive secretary for the exec board on H Y A A. And I don't know, like, I mean, for me, I, I, it's a Google doc and I take the notes right then and there in the meeting and I'm done. But when the meeting's over, my notes are done. So I'm not, you know, to me, if it's a live Google doc, that typically we're given as an agenda, sometimes that's been better. You just make a copy of it. And now you can just bullet right from there live in the, in the meeting. I mean, Dr. Kascan has been at my request, at least for the meetings that I'm in. Have been giving me the, a Chromebook, right? Like, you know, I said, don't give me the, and I even told Mr. Patrizzo recently, I said, don't give me the, I don't want it. I don't want the paper copies. Just put it on the, I'll take the agenda. That's it. So to me, if somebody makes a, if a chairperson makes a copy of that and just takes the notes. Or, I mean, it can be admin.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, live notes.
Yeah. Yeah. What, what seems to be, have been working pretty well, at least for the last number of months is, you know, the administrative sort of liaison on, on the subcommittee has been, you know, taking the lead on laying down the initial version of the notes and then sharing those with the chair. And then the chair sort of reviews them, puts yeah, any additions or their spin on them and then shares them out. And, and we're happy to do that. Continue to do that. Just, just one thing relative to the timeliness, and this might be something the board wants to consider when you set your days for committees is, you know, try and front load the week with your committees if possible. And, you know, no later than maybe Wednesday, if that's possible, because when you get to Thursday, you know, we're putting the agenda out to the board on Friday. And so even if we're being very diligent, getting those notes out, they're happening sort of contemporaneously or right after you get the agenda. But if we could have all committee meetings, if possible, done by Wednesday, then we could virtually guarantee that the board would have all the notes when we release the agenda, draft agenda on Friday.
I think if we collapse some of those committees into one another, I think that that's doable.
All right. Can I talk? Yes. I think it's a collaborative effort between the superintendent and the committee members and the chairperson and president and the vice president. That's when it's like, not to say, okay, the chairperson is responsible for make it sent out on time. But before that, all that work is a collaborative effort.
Yeah, I think the only, 100%, I think the only point I would make is, is ultimately what, what we would not want to do as administration is be the party that releases the minutes, right? So that I believe that, I think the chair should be the final reviewer and the one who ultimately sends them out because we would not want to overstep our role. You know, and sidestep the chair and their authority in chairing the committee.
Right. I would agree. I think, I think to, to end this conversation, maybe we, you know, as long as we, to me, as long as you get the many, meeting minutes, a couple of days prior to the Wednesday meeting. I think that should be, you know, on or before 48 hours, whatever it is, that the, our attorney looked in the public, in our policy. Right. Chair, chairperson drafts the minutes. So it is in there. I think we should just try to make the best practice of, like Eileen said before, having it at least a couple of days before. And I know that was a comment we had a few years ago, because you would get sometimes meeting minutes, literally the Wednesday of, in the morning for the meeting minutes. And, you know, obviously we're all volunteers and everyone has a full-time job. So things, you know, people are busy. So, but if we can make that as a, you know, I guess that would be the start of, for the next few committee meetings for the next couple of months, and see where that goes. And, you know, we'll, we'll have the chair, the administrative chair draft the notes like we've been doing. And then the committee chair will send out the notes to the rest of the board. Questions, the comments from the public?
Thank you. Debbie Brew, 15 Cindy Lane. So unfortunately for some of you, I have a really good memory. And I have been attending meetings since November 2012, when there was committee of the whole. And there was committee of the whole for a long time. And just as a member of the public's perspective, I thought committee of the whole was much better and much more transparent. And I'll tell you because what just happened now with discussing whether we should be committee of the whole or subcommittees. Everybody gets to see, and by the way, back then, there was not audio, there was not video of the meetings. So if it wasn't the BOE bruise cast on the old home del parents page, people really didn't know until the minutes came out. Which was, you know, Mike taking notes and it's difficult. There's a lot going on. So anyway, there was a lot of discussion going on and everybody could see how you came to that decision. Where I know a lot of you are on Facebook or, or everywhere else and people are constantly like, why did they do this? Why did they do that? Well, they don't see all the why. They just see the results. And that's not transparent. So even calendar meetings and things like that. You see like why you picked this holiday or when Ryan Hammer figured out it was leap year and we actually gained another day. Because, because dad went home to go over the calendar, I guess. But, you know, so as a member of the public, I'd just say the perspective that we have, being able to see everything, the one downfall is we were here pretty late. Some nights because it, it, it's a longer meeting. It's less meetings. It's a longer meeting. But for the public, I think it's great. They can't come. You can still see your view. How everybody came to that decision and who gave what input? And I always tell this story about when Phyllis Pass Scucci retired from the board. She said she would often come into the meetings feeling one way. And after the full board discussion, she would leave feeling a completely different way. So it's good to see everybody's perspectives and not just get it off of notes. And, you know, how you thought the meeting went. So that's my perspective. Congratulations, Pete. Congratulations, Terrence. I want to say I am so proud of Chris, of course, of my childhood friend and Jeff and John. Congratulations to all of you. But I'm also very proud that I voted for Joe Hammer. He did an amazing job here and I'm proud to call him my friend as well.
Pete? Pete, can I comment? I'm over here, Pete.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Deb. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let's public. Yeah. Thank you.
Joe Hammer, eight, ten in court. I just want to give you guys my perspective from the board. This is the challenge you're going to have. I think it's actually smart, Pete, that you give them two months or so to get the new board members activated because, so they understand what they're talking about. Because in the board meeting, in the subcommittee meetings, they'll learn a lot. However, I do think committee a whole will work better for you, but it's going to put a big burden on both the administration and the board to be well-prepared coming into these meetings. What it means is you're going to have much more denser meetings that are more transparent, but they gotta be really like CNI can last two hours as a subcommittee. If you have CNI in here, you got to get right to the heart of the matter and you should have documentation that takes out a lot of the superfluous discussion that you have during those meetings. Which means you need to have a very dense agenda, but also think about it before you come into those committee meetings of what your points are and what questions you have and being able to submit those questions to the board superintendent so that they can answer them prior to them coming to the meetings. So it's going to make much stronger, much better meetings. They're going to be much more denser and more content, which I think will be benefit both the public, but it's going to require a lot harder work on your standpoint. However, I think it'll also free up a lot of superfluous time that you have in committee meetings, like subcommittee meetings that go on or, or redone at once. So I do think you'll, it will be better for the public and for you, but it is going to require a lot more work. And I think it'll be better in the long run because I think you're going to have much more denser, much more coherent and to the point discussions versus back and forth of stuff. And I encourage that, that conversation to happen. You know, between board members and between the superintendent and the, the administration and the staff prior to even coming into those meetings as you go into the committee as a whole. So I, I think it's a good idea. I think you should try it and see how it works and get feedback from the public and from the parents as well. So that's all I.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments from the public? Please come to the mic.
Jay, you know, 18 Ladwood Drive. I'm coming here tonight as a parent who's got one child left in the school system for five more months. One who successfully went through the school system and is doing very well. TCNJ wants to become a teacher. And someone who's seen a lot in this town. I first want to thank also Mr. Hammer for many years of great service in what is often a thankless job, as you guys know. And he's been through a lot of interesting meetings here. I want to thank the new guys for joining. It'd been Chris. Chris and I have had some spirited disagreements politically, but I hope you put that passion to work for the students and the town. Mr. Hammer, not Mr. Hammer, Mr. Wall, your passion and focus will be continued to be value added. And Mr. Ready, who I've known for a while as a close neighbor and friend, I think you'll be an excellent president. I think you're very analytical. You're frugal, which is useful at times. And you're not afraid to throw a flag down, stop a game or flick a switch and say, I don't like this. And it, that's on whoever's side you're on at the time. And I think that's really needed in this town more often. So I'm very happy for you to become president. And the only other thing I wanted to say, and this is a mantra I've said many times up here before. I hope as a board, you all maintain and actually invigorate your commitment to special services in this town. We have a great service. We have a great program. It's put out some amazing kids. My daughter, Jordan, as many of you know, there are many other kids I've gotten to know that have come through this system. And I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again. It's not just the benefits to these kids with special needs. It's the benefits that are imputed to the typical children. Because they come out of this much. Because they come out of this much more familiar, comfortable and passion. Have passion with kids with special needs and they're going to be like that the rest of their lives. The things I've witnessed with typical children in this schools. Interacting with the children with special needs is like something you could have only dreamed of years ago. And I think we need to maintain that commitment. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. And yeah, one one thing I would like to mention, uh, last night was the township committee reorganization meeting. Uh, if anyone hadn't heard DJ, DJ Lucarelli was a nominee or elected mayor. And Rocco Improvadudo, who's in the back, was a uh, elected deputy mayor. So just want to congratulate both of them. And I think I know this board for the past number of years, we've always wanted to reach out and we always have had tried to reach out to the township and we will continue doing that. And. I'm super confident and uh, hopeful. That I think we will definitely see that. I so I'm really, really appreciative uh, that we would do that. And I I knew um. Elizabeth in this position, when she had a meeting with you guys last month, I think started that. So I think that's a great thing to do because there's so many people in this town that don't have kids in the school. And they would like to know what's going on in the school. We know the township has communications to them. So. I know one of our action items this year is to improve on that. And I know there'll be a little, uh, you know, symbiosis uh, doing that. So. Look forward to that. Any other comments from the public? Oh, I know, Chris.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer a perspective coming in new, listening to the to to meeting structures and how I feel about Terrence brought up a number of valid. Reasons on why committee of the whole uh, may benefit us all. I appreciate what Kim had to say, compromising with the rest of the board. And allowing all of us to experience both uh, types of meetings for the ones who haven't experienced the committee of the whole as well. Um, listening to uh, Deb and Joe, I think the more transparency we can offer to the community. Uh, i- i- is, you know, why they what they want. So uh, Pete, if you could run efficient meetings and uh. We we can be quick and 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 efficient. That would be, that'd be great. I like the sound of it, but I do appreciate. Uh, the compromise in giving us an opportunity to um, be in both systems. I'm I'm kind of just curious, is that something that we would do every year for new members to kind of, I I wouldn't want to be switching back and forth constantly either. Um, so I just wanted to provide just um. Just a a view. I I haven't, this is my first meeting, so I haven't heard anything. On another note, I just wanted to say that I'm excited to be up here. And I thank the Home Del community um, that supported us. And I look forward to working with all the other eight board members. Um, and the administration so that we can do the best for the Home Del School District, District, this phenomenal district. So thank you.
All right, I guess uh.
I want to say, just to, no, well, just to go off of um. Executive functioning is something that um, I have brought up with the curriculum committee over the past several months as something that um. Is is happening right now. This year is a new um. Uh, Bill, is it called ACES? ACES is new at SATS um, to look at executive functioning skills, something that's um, you know, was brought to the table, but I'm looking to bring it. Across the district, not just by the middle school. We need to attack it earlier. And um, to go along with special services, there is a. Our special services parent group, CPAC is meeting on January eleventh. And talking about executive functioning. So if anyone um, wants to come. It's um, a great um, opportunity to learn about executive functioning skills and it is January eleventh, right here at six thirty P M.
Thank you, Kim. All right, I guess.
No, I have just going back to the timing, since we didn't see committee of the whole for fifteen years, just Miss McGrew, was it prior to fifteen years? I'm just not, the timing, I'm not, uh. So then we should have had some experience with it. Mine hers was good, but. Ours too, we should have had.
Been variations.
Of it. So it'd be good to get your input as to how it was. I mean, I I value what she said, but that's all I'm saying. Who was on board still here? Was on fifteen years ago? Anyone?
Yeah, I have to go back. I mean, it, there's been variations. I remember when I was the ABA. Way back, they called it a workshop meeting. It really wasn't a committee of the whole. So there were attempts in the past. Uh, of having like workshop meetings, which was kind of like a committee of the whole. Um, but it's it it it's it is varied. Um, so we could certainly go back and 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 find out specifically.
Because she has experienced so as a as a member.
I I could just add a little perspective. Um, previous district in which I worked, um, the board operate under under committee of the whole. And um, they held a public, what they called an agenda meeting the week prior to the public meeting. And the primary purpose of that meeting was that which we do in our committee meetings, which is to review the motions. That are going to be placed on the agenda, walk through those, explain the explaining to the board. But it was also an opportunity. Um, if, you know, board, the board members had specific questions. Um, oftentimes what would happen is discussions about the motions would lead to other discussions. Which would then lead to future public presentations or white papers that were that were created by the administration to inform the board. So I operated within that for four years and um, and found it to be. Um, you know, to be very effective and efficient. So I can learn that that perspective.
All right, I think this brings us, we don't need to go into exec, I do not believe. Uh, brings us to the adjournment part. So motion to adjourn?
Move.
Any second?
Second.
All right, we are done. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Bye. Thank you for coming. Everyone, have a nice night.